Let's wait for the, we've got nine attendees so far. And for those who are just joining us, the previous work session went almost up to the time where this meeting was supposed to start. And we didn't take into consideration that we, it has to record the previous meeting. So I apologize on behalf of council. And next time, any work sessions that are broadcast will be terminated earlier so that the council meeting can start on time. So now we have thirty-three participants or observers, so we might as, we can start the meeting. I would like to call to order the Maplewood City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With the latency, it's kind of hard to, I don't want to screw up the pledge, but listening to everyone else, it's kind of difficult. So we need a roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Faulkham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Item number five is the approval of the council agenda.
Mayor, if I may interrupt before we.
Oh, yes, please.
I kept hoping that we would not have to continue to do this, but unfortunately, we are still meeting remotely because of the ongoing pandemic situation. So I want the minutes to reflect that under section six, ten point oh one five of the Missouri Sunshine Law, members of the city council who are not physically present in the council chamber can vote on all matters when an emergency exists. The nature of the emergency is so stated in the minutes. So let the minutes again reflect that we continue in this state of emergency, not only in the state of Missouri and the city of Maplewood, but throughout the United States. And for that reason, the city council is meeting remotely in order to adequately protect the public health, safety of each other, and as well as the general public. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Essel. Item number five is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Item number six is the first of two public forums. So the question is, has anyone raised their hand?
Yeah, we have a few.
Okay. Let's get started. And by the way, we still have some work session business to conduct. So if we can limit public comments to three minutes apiece, and then if you can, if you're adding on to what someone else said, if you can make it something new and not just reiterate the same thing. So let's get started with the public forum.
If it's also possible, just to state your name and address for the record, please. The first person, Mayor Greenberg, is Emily Lemons. I'm going to go ahead and bring Emily in.
Emily, can you hear us?
Yes. Uh-huh. Hi.
Hi.
So my name's Emily Lemmons Ewing. My address is seventy-one forty-two Kensington. And I wanted to speak briefly about the issue of the Maple Good mini pantries. It's clear that they're meeting a need in our community, and so I'd hate to see them go away. I understand that there are some concerns about liability, and I wonder if an ordinance and signs posted at the pantries could solve that issue. The sign could say something like, "Mini pantries provide unexpired, non-perishable, non-alcoholic, proven hygiene products to neighbors in need, and it's a violation of city ordinance to donate any other items to this pantry." In that way, although other things might appear, the city has cleared themselves of liability by prohibiting that from happening. And so that was just something that occurred to me that could work. I'm not an attorney, so we would need advice on that. But I do think that the pantries are doing a really good work for our community, and I hope they continue to be there. Thanks.
So we do have an attorney, and he's present. It's, Mr. Essel, do you have an opinion with regards to what was being proposed?
Well, unfortunately, I really haven't had time to read the memo that Councilmember Schmidt sent out. So I'm just not in a position to opine as to exactly what the city council is contemplating as with respect to the food pantries. Again, I appreciate the comments. Certainly, signs are helpful. Signs don't absolve a city from liability. So we're going to have to have further discussion on it. And it was, the message on the sign was articulated very well. I must admit that. I should have written it down, so we may utilize some of it. But again, I'm not sure that it's going to solve all of our problems.
I have our name and address, city attorney, so we can get that.
Okay.
It looks like Haley or Hallie Moore. I've got, I'm going to go ahead and bring Hallie in. Haley?
Can you hear us?
Hey, yeah. It's Hallie. Hallie Moore. My home, it's all right. My home address is thirty-nine oh eight Bergen, but I also own a business in Maplewood at twenty-one oh four Bellevue. I just also wanted to comment on the mini pantries. I think they're really valuable for our community, and especially for Maplewood that prides itself as being small-town and community-oriented. I think looking out for the vulnerable in our population is really, really good and really part of what we set out to do. I understand that there's some intricacies with it, but I think it's worth that further conversation and finding a way to make this work, because what Maple Good has done so far has been incredible during this pandemic, and I'd really love to see this program continue. Thank you.
Thanks, Hallie.
All right. Looks like Laney Schenkelberg. I'll go ahead and bring, can you hear us now, Laney?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good job on the last name. You got it right. So my name is Laney Schenkelberg. I'm at seventy-three twenty-eight Marietta, and I'm also here to talk about the Maple Good mini food pantries. For anybody who may not be familiar, Maple Good started in the early days of the pandemic to crowdsource and distribute essential services and resources to the Maplewood Richmond Heights community, and to really reach people that may not be able to go out and grocery shopping, be able to reach out for assistance, things like that. And so it's really been a grassroots effort, and now it's launched and become an umbrella organization with multiple project arms. So the miniature food pantry project is one of those project arms, and there's become a network of them throughout the Maplewood and Richmond Heights communities. So I know this has been a topic of discussion with the city and the council, and I wanted to join to speak a little bit about my experience with that. Each food pantry has a manager, and I'm one of the managers. I manage the food pantry near my house. It's called the Blessing Box, and it's on Marshall near Anna on the property of Mid-Cities Church, which was previously Maplewood Baptist. It's a freestanding pedestal box, and it looks kind of like a little library. And I want to mention, it was built for an Eagle Scout project by Micah Jones. So thank you, Micah. So I keep an eye on how much food is in there, what's popular, how quickly it's depleted. I also check for food safety and ensure nothing has expired or perished, and keep it clean and organized. I also communicate to community members in the Maple Good group when it's running low, and we have people community source donations. I just replenished it yesterday. And by the way, this, the food goes so quickly in there, we really have to replenish it almost daily. Maplewood United Church donated a large amount of food, which I used to stock it yesterday. And about seventy-five percent of that food stocked yesterday has already been depleted, and this is typical. So it really showcases the need in our community, and it's filling a gap that traditional food pantries leave. We don't require ID. We don't have open and closed hours. You don't have to be a resident. You can help yourself anonymously and with dignity, which is extremely important right now. It's helping people who may not know about food pantries, or may feel a sense of shame when utilizing them, or even maybe scared to use them. The boxes are allowing for anonymous dignified use, and it's allowing the same people who use them when they are in need to give back. And I've talked to several people who do this. They give when they can, and they take when they need. And that is also adding to the dignified way in which these food pantries are serving our community members. I, because I live so close, I'm, I walk around this area a lot, and I've spoken with people who use this box. People are using it to feed their children dinner. People are using it when they just need to grab something to eat while walking from one job to the next. People walk by, and they see me filling the box, and they express how great it is that we're doing this in our community. And this, these miniature food pantries are how so many people within our community are both giving and getting support. And for many people on both sides, that's getting them through a lot of these hard times. So that's my personal experience with it. I've heard some rumblings in the community about some concerns that the pantries may be attracting vulnerable populations, such as people who are unhoused. And if that's the case, as a community, we have a choice to make. We can treat vulnerable populations like human beings who deserve dignity and hope and brainstorm ways to help, help them while keeping our community safe, or we can remove their source of food and displace them. I think we all know which choice is easy, which choice is hard, and which choice is right and upholds the values of our community. So I would challenge all of you to look at this as an extraordinary opportunity to do what Maplewood does best, and lead by example by doing some really good within our community.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
Jen Ridgway. Jen, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Hi, this is Jennifer Ridgway. I am speaking on behalf of the Mid-County Chamber of Commerce. We would like to bring attention to, to the issue that has been spoken of about the unhoused individuals that have been attracted to our community, and the impacts that it's had on our business district. I want to make reference to the letter that our board has sent to the city council on August fourth. We've had numerous business owners and some residents express concerns to us and share specific examples of safety concerns due to altercations with their customers, panhandling, public health concerns from human waste and other undesirable instances that are happening in our parks and in the business district. These are challenging times, and we definitely share in the empathy and efforts to provide a solution to help these individuals. We are asking that the city council take a holistic approach to this issue and consider the unintended consequences to the already vulnerable business district. There's a great need right now to ensure our business district remains welcoming and safe. The community and businesses really need our support right now more than ever with the pandemic and the stay-at-home orders. A lot of them are really struggling at the moment. But we, you know, want to reiterate that we, we are proud of and admire our city's efforts to support the individuals and to get the help that they need, but to ask for consideration on how, as a whole, this impacts our business community, that so many of us have worked so hard for many years to build the Maplewood that is vibrant and desirable that we have today. You know, as a business owner, a resident, and a parent in this community, I join everyone's efforts in wanting to continue to see our community thrive.
I see that there's someone else that would like to speak.
Shauna Jones, please. Shauna, can you hear us?
Yes, how y'all doing today, council?
Howdy.
Howdy. So my name is Shauna Jones, and I'm the seventy-six fifty-nine Falk Avenue. I am the founder of Keep Pushing. I'm also the founder of the Grab and Go Table on the corner of Falk and Brindle. And I kind of just want to touch a little basis, because I have had a lot of talk with a lot of people in Maplewood. I'm new to Maplewood, so I, I'm very interested with everything that's going on. I've only been here five months. But as I have took a hold to be resident in Maplewood, I have an eighteen-year-old, fourteen-year-old, and eleven-month-old. So I'm a mother, I'm a parent, I'm a owner, and I have a lot. I'm also a member of the St. Louis County Community Care of the county that helped the, do resource for the unhoused. And I just want to give the board just a little sense, since I've been here, if you don't know, have made very national news, being a member over here in Maplewood, doing the good that I do over here on the corner. And we have made CNN, ABC, NBC. And the thing about it is that I have realized that Maplewood is a great community. Maplewood have a lot of community that care about their neighbors. They, they really care about who they live next to, and that's really, really, really good to me. The pantries that have been put up is, is really like, was so exciting. I started a Keep Pushing Challenge that went all the way to California, to Boston. People have emails and letters all the way from Boston, California, Texas, Alabama, who saw what we was doing here in Maplewood, Missouri, because every time I went on TV, it was in St. Louis, they mentioned, they mentioned Maplewood, Missouri. And they saw what we was doing to help our people in the community. I have been running the Grab and Go Table for four months, and every day I average to take care of forty-five families just out of the front yard of my home. And I would tell y'all, the people that are in need during these pandemics and what we have going on, it's not just the unhoused, it's our neighbors, it's the people that we see on a regular basis that this pandemic have done something to our lives and changed that we're not used to what's going on, but we try to give justice to the norm. I have had neighbors who say, hey, I don't know how to do this, but can you want me to? So that's why we keep the table out to eight o'clock, wherever, because we do not want nobody to feel judged or anything, and we run six days a week. The pantries is helping, because even if they can't get over here to Falk and Brindle, they could go to a pantry, and they could get the food they need, because most of the pantries, the community field, but also I opened up where they could come over here and get food to make sure we have the food for those pantry, for those teenagers who mom and father who's working late at night, they could still go over there and get a ready-to-go meal or whatever to help. I really don't know the whole background in Maplewood, how things goes, and I'm really open to anything and everything. I'm very hardworking, but I really just feel like if we could put in some kind of system so the, the city won't be reliable on, on certain levels, and that Maple Good, I'm a co-leader of the pantry, so I'm out there on a daily basis, make sure all pantries are doing good, that is, is a city ordinance. I have done this in North Carolina, Raleigh, North Carolina, Greenville, North Carolina, have done it in Atlanta, Georgia, have done it over in Houston, Texas. And the city always come together to make sure we can still just help, because I understand it's a hard time. Everybody's stressing right now, and a lot is going on. But if we could continue to be the neighbors that we've been doing, the neighbors that I told the United States of the world, everybody on national TV about Maplewood, I believe that we could come together and still make notice, because I love Maplewood. I don't say St. Louis, I don't say, I say I live in Maplewood. When I'm doing an interview, I say I live in Maplewood. Next week, we'll be back on TV, and I will say I live in Maplewood, and it's my Maplewood community. And I just hate to not see that my city is not really on board of helping. And I'm, like I said, I'm new, so I'm just really going by what I hear, but as, you know, me here for the five months I've been here, we have done a lot. We have, we have changed, and I have not done it by myself. I have done it with the help of the community of Maplewood. So that's all I want y'all to know.
Okay, thank you, Shauna.
Gina LaRose. Gina, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Gosh, I'm a little intimidated to follow Shauna. I feel like I'm following a celebrity. But my name's Gina LaRose. I live at seventy-three ninety Flora. Just quickly, as a library board member, I wanted to thank you guys for spending the last ninety minutes digging into the process of recruitment and the structure of the boards and commissions. I know that was tedious, and it's not over, but I think it was necessary, so thank you for doing that. So now I'm, I'm going to put on my concerned resident hat for the remainder of my statement. After virtually attending the last city council meeting, and then reading the letter from the Mid-County Chamber of Commerce, I've been sitting with a whole lot of different thoughts on the matter of what constitutes as a threat to our community. Like many Americans, I grew up with the myth of the American dream and the idea that we live in a meritocracy. As a young person, I believe that if you worked hard enough, and you were a good enough person, then you would be rewarded with homeownership, a quality education, and steady employment. More at least, more recently, it has become abundantly clear that this notion is not rooted entirely in reality. Instead, we know that economic success in adulthood has a lot more to do with the economic success of your parents and grandparents than it does of anything else. And in that realization, I also had to grapple with the notion that those in poverty are not actually there by any fault or desire of their own. It is through some very serious introspection and rewiring of my own thought process that I have come to realize that a person who is insecure of housing or of food is not a bad or undesirable person. And here we are, sitting at the edge of another economic cliff, and it seems very clear that millions of Americans are about to face evictions. We are looking at a real crisis of homelessness and food insecurities, where good, hardworking people are going to face devastating economic hardships, and that will happen here in our neighborhood. And in fact, we know that the economic downturn has already pushed many local individuals and families to the very edges of their resources. And how cool is it that we already have this amazing infrastructure of compassionate and generous residents that have been scrambling together since March to provide compassionate care and vital resources to those in need? We are a scrappy bunch of big-hearted folks here in Maplewood. How great is that? When I, what I hear from some folks is that they are worried. I hear concerns from the Chamber of Commerce and from Mr. Traxler, who are worried that some of this generosity has resulted in bringing individuals into our community who pose a threat. So I ask you, what do we do about this perceived threat? I would suggest that we start by taking a critical look at how real that threat actually is when it comes to the presence of unhoused individuals, because I would argue that the real threat to our community is the pandemic, the ongoing economic downturn, the stripping away of the financial safety net to those who are relying on it, the scarcity of jobs, and the threat of food insecurity. If we can take, continue to tackle those threats together, then we can give our friends and neighbors a fighting chance to keep their homes, feed their children, and provide them with essential resources to keep themselves healthy and free from illness. I am proud to be a resident of Maplewood. I am proud of our leadership, of our schools, of our business community, and of my very generous neighbors. I believe in this community, and I believe that if we can all come together with a real understanding of where the threats are coming from and who is in danger, then we have the capacity to keep our community, all of our community, strong and resilient. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is, just says Galaxy A fifty. I assume that's the device. I'll go ahead and bring that person in. Can you hear us?
I sure can. I'm sorry. This is Sheila Suterwala. I live at thirty-five forty-six Commonwealth Avenue, and I'm also Executive Director of Artist First at seventy-one ninety Manchester. Appreciate everyone's comments tonight. I just want to add a very quick perspective. I can't, it's very difficult for me to separate myself as a resident and someone who has a nonprofit in our community. Many of you on the council, specifically Mayor Greenberg, have heard me advocate for the seventy-one hundred block of Manchester for the past seven years, and a lot of improvements have been made. We, Artist First does help stock that food pantry. We monitor it every day, being right diagonally across the street from it. And from my perspective, and that of my staff, the people that are utilizing this particular food pantry at the Yale bus stop are residents. We know the regulars, we know the neighbors in the neighborhood. We have not seen an uptick in homelessness on our block. In the past, our block was the block. I can tell you of, of one person who's, I think, been, been there for quite some time. Other than that, we have not seen any issues with that, that negative issues, that is, with that food pantry. Sometimes people get food from the food pantry, and they come to our bench outside Artist First, they eat the food, they put the trash in the receptacles. There are some, and again, been very vocal, there have been some key individuals on that block that do like to initiate chaos. We know who these people are. The last city council meeting, I think, referenced an incident where the police responded. And the person that initiated the TV hoopla is the very individual we have been saying is, is a nuisance, and he lives in the neighborhood. That bus stop is a community, it seems like to be a community meeting place for a lot of folks. And so again, from my personal perspective about this food pantry, what we are seeing and what we are hearing is that it is residents of Maplewood that are utilizing it. Myself and another business owner on that block, again, both put food in the pantry, and both of us are in constant contact with each other. Neither of us have felt that there has been an uprising, negative incidences recently. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person would be Janine Beck. Janine, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Janine Beck. I am the Executive Director of the Mid-County Chamber of Commerce. We are at seventy-three twenty-six A Manchester Road. And I think I just want to clarify that we are not at all against, against helping out the neighbors, as our letter also specified. We are, as you guys, I hope can appreciate, we are the voice of our business community. And when we have businesses and property owners that are raising concerns about people sleeping on benches in mid-morning when they're opening their stores and restaurants, that, that is a cause of concern. As somebody pointed out, this pandemic is breaking people in, in, in all different ways. But our business people, it's their livelihoods that are going up in smoke. And I guess it's, I'm passionate about it, because it's what I do in day out, every day. And I've gotten to the point now where taking calls from businesses, it's, I, I almost want to avoid the calls, because there's just no good news. So I guess when, I'm hoping that the city council, I don't, I don't know the answers to what, to the food pantries, if they go, if they stay. I'm just saying that when we have, whether it's a real risk or a perceived risk, when people are sleeping on benches, I assume that they're not residents, maybe they are. Or I know that there's, was one instance of some panhandling where it wasn't just asking for money, it was demanding money. When we're trying to bring people into the community, we are just concerned that this is going to, they won't even open the car door if they are seeing some of the things. So on that note, I also would hope that the council would help us spread the word that we are having Taste of Maplewood next week. It's a week-long event. And I know, one thing I do know about this council is that you support your, your local businesses. I know that Karen and Barry are at every ribbon cutting. Eleanor, I know you are a faithful patron at the Blue Duck. You go every week, I'm told. And I know that a lot of the other council members, Sandy Phillips, for instance, I know that you're at the Christmas tree walk, and you'll be interested to know, we're doing our, our punch card again. I know you and your husband both, both won that. We're going to do that again. If you shop five times at five different stores next week, you will win a prize, ten dollars or more. But more importantly, they just need to see you. When you go into their stores, tell them who you are, tell them that you support them. If you could help us spread the word about. If you could help us spread the word about, about it, we would really appreciate it. And again, I hope nobody took our letter to mean that we don't empathize with, with those that are unhoused or don't have enough food. It's just, we would like some consideration of our business community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like Becky Flynn. Becky, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm just, just real quickly, I, I, all of these comments have been so fabulous. And I appreciate everyone taking the time to talk about this issue in Maplewood. But I do want to bring it around a little bit before the pandemic. The reality is there's food insecurity in our community. The MRH schools have been providing Weekend on Wheels for years to members of our community. So this idea that somehow these food pantries are the problem is backwards to me. The food pantries are the solution to a problem that we already have in this community, which is food insecurity, plus a pandemic, plus people facing eviction, you know. So that's all I really wanted to put out there is that, you know, I, I think we need to look at it from the standpoint that this is a solution to a problem that's been here for a long time. Now, in terms of the homeless, unhoused population and the issues with, you know, that the city Chamber of Commerce brought up, or Mid County Chamber of Commerce brought up. I mean, I think those issues were already here. And I, it doesn't sound to me like they're saying these issues are a result of the food pantries either. So I think we need to take kind of like a big picture look here and see that, that these food pantries are not bringing in unhoused people. They're not, you know, we're not swelling with, you know, people coming here to get food. These are people in our community that have already been benefiting from some of these programs, and we're just taking it up a notch. And that's all I really wanted to say. Thanks a lot for hearing me.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like Kara Harland Kramer. Kara, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, again, it's Kara Harland Kramer. I'm at 3525 Commonwealth Avenue. I just wanted to step in. I appreciate what the previous caller had to say because I completely agree and mirror her opinion about food shortages in our community and the need for low-cost and readily available food, not just students, but for our families that are childless as well. We have lots of food insecurity in this community, you know. Missouri is, Missouri as a whole, food insecurity is a big issue. But I just wanted to say, when the representative for our chamber comes on and talks more about representing businesses as a whole than people and individuals that are sleeping on the street, that is a shame. I am furious right now as a resident of Maplewood, as somebody who loves my local businesses, supports my local businesses, and makes a purpose to actually, you know, makes, and I should say, excuse me, shops with purpose and intent to go, you know, not to big box stores, not to Walmart, but to, you know, my local vendors and pick up my milk from the living room and buy coffee from La Coseca. For someone to not acknowledge that people living on the streets deserve our time of day and that they're not a risk, we can actually stop and treat those individuals like human beings. We don't need to write a letter to someone at the Chamber of Commerce. We can, if there is a danger, fine. It's not harmful to actually engage people and treat them as their humans. I am furious that that is actually how she spoke about these folks. And you can hear it in my voice. I am shaking. I am upset. I have engaged with folks and worked with the mentally ill, and to know that people in our city feel that way, it's a problem. And if this is how we look at folks in our community that are on the edge of losing their housing, of having need for food, do you think people would feel comfortable coming to the city or reaching out? No, they're going to feel more comfortable going to a box on the corner of the street grabbing food without giving their name, because they know they're going to be passed judgment if they go somewhere and give their name to someone. That is a shame. We as a community need to work on that, and we need to strive to be better. Because we need to not pass judgment on those folks, even if someone on the street is demanding money, is asking in a negative way or an abusive way, most likely that person is not doing it because they're evil. It's because they're mentally ill. Something has went on. And as a person who lives in a home, has air conditioning, has food in my belly, I'm able to determine that. And I'm sorry, I'm very upset about all this, but I just wanted to say that. And I hope that you folks and Mayor, you can understand that as a citizen, how angry that makes me. I really hope we take that in consideration because these food boxes need to stay, because families deserve the right to have access to these things until we can look at everyone the same. Because we just proved on this call tonight that we clearly have an issue when we look at people as less than, just because they don't sleep in the same bed that we do. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Heidi Helmut. Heidi, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I've been listening to all of these impassioned speakers before me. And I'm, I just feel like they're really, everybody's trying to do what's right for their point of view. And I see two main problems that we're trying to solve. One with the food pantries is one more step towards helping people in need. And the second from our business owners of some of the problems that they might be seeing, whether, you know, again, perceived real, certain low level, high level, it is still real to them. And these are people who are also important to the economic viability of the city, as are the employees they have if the businesses go under and all these things. So there's no demons here, in my opinion. Everybody's trying to do something good. So I think if we could look at this and say, start by saying, we need to help these people and the food pantries are doing that, and we have two problems to solve. One is the liability issue, and there are solutions to that. I don't know what they are, but some have been proposed tonight. So instead of saying, should we have them or not, it should be a default. We need to have them. Where we have them, how we have them, how we protect the city, that should be the question. The second is, how do we deal with, if there are people acting inappropriately or acting out? People speed down my street all the time. My neighbor complains about it all the time. We don't shut the street down. We need to stop those people who are speeding. So I don't think we should stop something because a very small minority of people are acting inappropriately, potentially, maybe they're drawn to the city, maybe they're residents. I think we need to solve that problem, deal with those people, have the police called, the, the the mental health folks called, deal with those people, but don't paint everyone with that same brush and just take them away. So I'd rather see us look at problem solving. How do we solve the liability issue? How do we solve the problem with some people acting inappropriately and not paint a wide brush by making the discussion on whether we do or don't have these food pantries? I think that should be a given. It should just be, how do we do it right? Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we have one.
Yes, Neil Soder. Neil, can you hear us, Neil?
Neil, it looks like you're muted.
All right, this is better.
Yes.
All right. So I'm with Foundation Grounds Coffee House on 7298 Manchester. And just to quickly reiterate some points and just address others. You know, I don't think anyone I know, either from the city or, or community, does not want to help out any, any individual on the streets or in our community. Everybody I know that, you know, I think even the business owners that I know, we're all about helping every individual as much as possible, you know, at all times. And that's part of Maplewood, that's part of our communities. I don't think there is a debate or two sides of the street where, you know, the chamber or the city or anybody, you know, does not want to help. I think that's not the issue. I think is, what's the best and safest way to address all these issues? And if it's real or perceived, I think it is real from my perspective. So, you know, just last Friday, I had an altercation with a gentleman who, who had an issue with a customer, and then he kind of came to me, approached me, and then started coming at me, threatening to sue me, threatening to, you know, call the police or whatever and keep me, get me out of business. And I saw him get on the bus and, and take off. So obviously, I've never met him. He's not part of our community. He's one of those individuals that came in. You know, and we've had an increased number of customer complaints about people approaching them, you know, and just making them uncomfortable, so they, they don't come anymore. So we're already down 75%. We're patio only to be safe. And now even that business is slowing down, just because we're getting a lot of folks approaching them. Not defending one side or the other. I, I agree. We're in a tough situation, but these are the facts. So, you know, it's about business sustainability. It's about helping others. I'll be the first one to help out anyone out there that reaches out to me. So it's not about taking sides here. It's about, you know, what's realistic and, and sustainable for the future of, of our community as well as helping others. So, no, it's, it's not taking sides. So I just want to reiterate, I don't, I don't think everybody has to choose a side here. To, to the last person who spoke, how do we solve for these problems? And how do we address these issues that in some instances are real? You know, there's plenty of people in the community. I know a lot of folks that have come in with mental disabilities and so forth. We help them out. We, we, we know who they are. And that's, you know, I think a lot of people do, in business owners. So that's, I don't think that's the thing that we're talking about. It is these outsiders coming in and making these, you know, one-offs. It's maybe 1% of the bunch that's messing up this entire experience for everybody else. So that, you know, that's what I kind of just wrap it up with that. It's just a couple of things that we all need to think about is, you know, maybe it's just this small, small percentage of people that is, you know, impacting the, the cause of what we're trying to do for the bigger community. And thank you.
Thank you, Neil. I don't see anyone else queued up for the public forum. Keep in mind that there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting to engage with council. So with that said, we're going to move on to announcements. And are there any announcements?
Well, I was gonna announce a correction. Last meeting, I said that the MRH School District was going to start school on August 24th. So that, we're having a meeting that same night, and it's starting, probably everybody knows, but anyway, I wanted to correct myself. That it is September 1st, K through 12. So, and it will be virtual. So the other thing, I just wanted to point out that Wandering Wednesdays continues through September. And we only have two more concerts in the park. One is August 26th, and the last one is September 24th. So those will be coming to an end. And Taste of Maplewood, well, Janine already mentioned that. So that's coming up. So that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there, are there any other announcements? Okay. Item number eight is the approval of the July 28th, 2020 City Council Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second. Any changes? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. The next item is Great Rivers Greenway Presentation regarding the pedestrian trail.
Mayor Green, members of the council, GRC called. They're gonna, they're gonna be here on the 25th, which would be the next meeting, instead of that's okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. Item number 10 is in ordinance of the City Council of City, the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing a minor subdivision plant of lot E, of the Sun and Station redevelopment to create lots E1 and E2, and approving a final development plan for lot E1.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask if there's any discussion. I apologize. Okay. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Second reading, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing a minor subdivision plant of lot E, of the Sun and Station redevelopment to create lots E1 and E2, and approving a final development plan for lot E1.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will be tabled, moved on to the final reading at the next meeting. Item number 11 is ordinance of the City of Maple, of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing a minor subdivision plant of 2918 Bridell Avenue.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The second reading, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing a minor subdivision plant of 2918 Bridell Avenue.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will be tabled, moved on to the final reading at the next meeting. Item number 12 is Bill 6144, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance 5573 as amended by amending Chapter 54, Article 3, weeds, Section 54-57 definitions.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah.
Bill 6144 becomes ordinance number 5939.
Thank you. Item number 13 is council communication. Before we get back into our discussion of boards and commissions, is there any other council communication that people would like to give? So I'll take it. I heard something there.
Well, I don't, I was wondering if we wanted to maybe make a plan to put as an agenda item or a work session to talk about solutions for our businesses to be able to use Park, the City Park property for, for expanding their businesses under the reduced density orders. And I, I want to be clear that my email before was not proposing a particular anything. It was asking if we could gather, if, if we could get together with Anthony, Laura, I'd like to hear more from Laura, maybe with our Parks Board to brainstorm.
I have no problem with that, if we wanted to address it with a work session.
That sounds good to me.
Sounds good. Would you like to do it at the next meeting? Because I I gotta look, but I believe we have another work session.
We already have a work session.
Yeah.
The next one.
Okay, so we'd want to do that in the future, after? The following meeting after that, the first meeting in September, or we want to do some other Monday?
When does the Parks Board meet? Because can we get them rolling on this in the meantime?
Yes, or the third Thursday of the month, we can have them before.
Yeah, I've been, I, because I haven't seen any public meetings from them on the agenda. So are they, are they definitely meeting with Zoom?
They're meeting on an as-needed basis, so if they don't have any agenda items, they're not going to meet.
Okay, so.
But is this saying we're going to give them an agenda item?
Yes. When you do, Anthony, make sure that you give them the background that.
Absolutely.
That.
Just go ahead and, I could just forward our recent email chain to them, and then I'll say, if you have any questions, call me.
Well, I've talked to her and I've talked to two other businesses as well. And if, if they need an advocate or you want me to write something up for them to look at, I'd be more than happy to, or even have recommended those people go talk to the Park Board or go to the meeting.
recommended those people go talk to the park board or go to the meeting.
Yeah, I, I've talked to a couple businesses.
Excuse me. So, um, you know, I don't know, uh, how you want to do that, but we can certainly get in touch and make sure that they're there at the park board meeting.
And just for the, the general audience, what we're about is, um, the parks, uh, there's, there's restrictions that essentially businesses shouldn't be using parks for, um, basically charging them for a good or service. And we're considering, um, the, with the pandemic, uh, like, like a yoga studio or some other area where there needs to be, they need to be spread out. Being outdoors is safer.
Health and wellness.
Or, uh, we're considering, um, allowing them to utilize, um, parks for these purposes. Um, we've always historically allowed it in Sutton Loop Park because there's no reservations, but we're considering other parks as. I, I believe I summed that up okay for the council. Does that, you guys agree?
Yeah.
We're talking about. And so I'll, I'll send that out and we'll, we'll get that meeting scheduled and let them know the council would like them to, uh, like their thoughts on this issue. I'll let you guys know when that next meeting is just, but it should be the third Thursday.
Third, okay.
So. Would it be worth it to make this an, an agenda? I mean, I, I don't want to delay it because clearly there's a need and, you know, at some point the weather will turn. So it seems like the sooner we can address this.
We can make an agenda item for the next, uh, council meeting. I believe it's on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. Yeah, I'd like to do that.
We'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to touch briefly on my comments in the public forum and thank everyone for speaking. Um, in the two thousand and eight recession, my family had to rely on food pantries. Um, it wasn't an entirely dignified process. And so I'm really touched by the efforts of Maple Good and those who are supporting those pantries, who are filling them, who are monitoring them. Um, and I just want to say that I know many of us here tonight are already committed to finding a, a sustainable, uh, long-term solution for these pantries in a way that keeps them accessible to the people who need them the most while also protecting and preserving, um, you know, the legal stance of the city. And so I, I just want to voice my gratitude for the folks who spoke tonight while also acknowledging, excuse me, um, the fact that some of us are working on this. And I hope that, uh, you know, the other members of this body are interested in finding a path forward that supports the people who need these, uh, pantries.
Okay, uh, other council communication before we talk about boards and commissions? Okay, uh, we have a lot more participants online right now than we did earlier in our work session. So just to briefly recap, uh, we're having a discussion about how we're going to be dealing with our boards and commissions. In the future, we've talked about number of members on the board, residency, recruitment, nomination, selection, uh, removal from boards, board chairs, things like that. And terms, length of terms, staggering of terms. And so we're at the point where we're going to be talking about how does the, uh, how do the boards and commissions interact with the council? Uh, there's not that many topics left, not as many as we've already addressed in the, uh, one and a half hour, uh, work sessions. So please bear with us. Uh, so as far as, you know, we have talked about council, uh, the boards and commissions making uh, presentations to the city council. So, uh, we need to, this is one of those topics that, this is one of the ones that I think we need, uh, more input from the boards and commissions on how they want to do that. But we also have to tell them what, what we want to accomplish by making the presentation. So who would like to start the discussion? Uh, are we, are we thinking that we would have, uh, one presentation a year from each of the, uh, boards and commissions?
I, I thought the idea was to start with one and see which one, one from each, and then see which boards may, may benefit from more than one and just kind of play it by ear. Was that accurate?
Yes.
Yeah, we did have a tentative draft of a couple, um, I think sustainability library and park we had thought might be twice a year, might be useful, but, um, that we would start with one. That's what I wrote down from our meeting like a month ago.
Uh, one thing that I found very useful with the sustainability commission, Eleanor, before you were, uh, a member is that uh, we asked them to make a presentation specifically about their priorities on what they wanted to accomplish. And that allowed, you know, mainly we, we don't want them working on things that aren't going to necessarily be supported by the council. So the ideas, uh, they presented, I think, ten, uh, items to us and we, we had to, you know, it was our job to discuss those and determine which ones were priorities that we felt could be implemented. And so, uh, I'm wondering, you know, what I, what that leads me to, I'm wondering if we should be giving them a little bit of direction on what we're looking for, or just let them make, you know, a presentation that they feel is appropriate.
I mean, I, I would like to hear kind of what are the high, you know, what are the, what have you been working on? Like, what are the highlights of what you've been working on? What are some of the things that you want to work on? Um, are there any things you need, like questions, you know? Is there any way that we can be helpful or that guidance can be helpful? Um, what do other folks think?
I'm curious if this, you know, maybe putting them on the spot too soon, but since we're going to involve the parks board with the conversation that we're going to have at our very next meeting, is this an opportunity to bring someone from the parks board into the meeting? And have them there for that conversation and, and have it a dialogue versus a presentation?
Yeah, I kind of agree that I think it might be different for each one. I, I don't really want to set one, you know, standard for everybody to do the same thing. And that's because you, you know, I kind of like to leave it up to them. Or whatever we might be working on that they could help us know what they're doing as well. So, I think that might just be, you know, not the, not the same for everybody.
Well, maybe we can do one. Everyone can sort of present to us what they think we should know. And then we can always modify it going forward. Does that?
But can I, can I ask a clarifying question? Um, councilmember Philip, I think that, um, thank you for, for bringing that up. I, I do hope, like, are you, can we anytime that there is something where there would be a relative, relative, and we, I mean, we can invite a board to be a part of a discussion anytime. Can we not?
Yes, we can.
Cause I, I, I appreciate that suggestion for the discussion. You know, if we have a discussion about an ordinance that, that we should be inviting. Um, but I think, I mean, hopefully we can have a regular schedule of meeting with boards.
Are you talking about?
Inviting them.
You're talking about inviting the entire park board to have this discussion?
Representative.
That's where that chair would come in handy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as long as I think he speaks for the majority in, in any vote that they took, I think that's perfectly okay.
And, you know, at least that way we can have a discussion in real time. Uh, it doesn't mean, you know, right now what happens is that we, uh, discuss a topic and then we, we send our questions or comments to them and they, they reply. And then, you know, then we have that feedback. But having that conversation in real time would be, I think, helpful, even if it's a situation where, uh, they have to go back and do some research or talk to the rest of the board. So, uh, as far as interaction presentations, then, uh, I don't know that we need to belabor the point, but we, and we can also come back to this too. But, uh, is there anything else with regards to presentations, uh, you know, from, uh, boards and commissions to council? Okay, uh, the next item is the observation of board meetings. I put that on the list. I know that the consensus last time was that, uh, they should come to us. Uh, you know, my experience has been when I attend board and commission meetings that I learn a lot about how they actually conduct business. There's advantages to it, but it does take, you know, uh, a commitment from council members to attend board and commission mem, uh, meetings. So, uh, I, all I can say is I would encourage, you know, council members to attend board and commission meetings, but I don't know that we need to make this mandatory. You know, uh, responsibility. Uh, the next, it, in, does anyone have any comments on that?
I'm, I'm okay with observation. As long as a council person does not interfere. Uh, unless that particular item on an agenda concerns them or their house or something. But we've had some issues in the past and, uh, you know, we're not there to influence the boards and commissions. They're there to influence us. And, uh, I'm just, I'm wary. I'm okay with observation, but I'm just wary because, uh, just because we have seven awesome people on the council now, doesn't mean in a year and a half that that won't be the case. And, uh, they'll want to, uh, meddle and interfere, um, especially with the ones like design review, planning and zoning, those kinds of things. So, um, yeah, I'm just, I'm expressing a reservation. I'm, I'm perfectly okay with that observation, but.
I'm not, and I'm not opposed to like, I mean, I know some councils like divide boards up and they observe and they report back. Um, but that just takes, you know, a commitment and it doesn't seem worth it unless we're all committed to doing that. Um, so if people are, that's fine. Um, but we are now, you know, maybe we see how the presentations go and then, you know, if we feel like it would be more helpful for someone to sort of follow meeting to meeting and then report back sort of what people are working on. I mean, that works too, but I agree. I mean, I don't think we're allowed to interfere anyway.
No.
Based on that. So.
Well.
Anyone doing that would be acting.
My point is sometimes a presence at very, uh, particular kinds of meetings can, can sway people. I've seen it. I attended one, one time and I felt like I was interfering. Um, I didn't say a word, no, nothing. It was just about what they were talking about and the fact that a council member was there. I think people were, the people on the board were much more hesitant to talk about whatever that particular issue was. So I kind of learned my lesson and I had already heard, don't go. Um, I was just curious about this particular issue. And, um, again, uh, even your presence can, can, can cause some undue concern, especially if they're dealing with a contentious issue in the city of Maplewood, which I've been through a few. So.
Yeah, of the dozens of meetings I've been to, I have interacted when, when I've been asked my opinion of something. But, uh,
You know, you said, you said no comment, right? I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm always reluctant to give my opinion on everything. So.
Yeah.
So as far as observation of board meetings, I think we've addressed that unless someone else has something, something they want to add. Uh, the next topic is information on the website. And we do, we've discussed this as to what, you know, what we want to see. And, and we want people in the, from the public to know that, uh, there will be sufficient information on the website as to what the, the board and commission does, when they meet, where they meet, how they meet, uh, what, you know, uh, their agendas are, are available online. And, uh, in an effort to make things more transparent and in an effort to allow them to participate, uh, not only as an observer, but also as a, a board member or commission member, we're going to try and, uh, make that as clear and, uh, as, as we can. So that's something that I'm sure Laura will be working on. We've already given uh, a lot of direction with regards to what type of information we want to see. Uh, and that, that dovetails into social media presence. Uh, and that's not an area of my expertise. So, uh, you know, I, obviously we're, the, the normal channels, uh, of, uh, Facebook, uh, I'm, I'm not sure what other, uh, social media, you know, we're involved in, but whatever, uh, whatever it is, it, uh.
Are you talking about individual social media accounts or like presence for the boards or advertising openings on social media?
I, I think it has to happen on both, you know, uh, you know, public forums and then also, uh, making sure that people get on email lists of, uh, of topics that, you know, that are of interest to them and make sure that we post, you know, things like vacancies on boards on those, uh, you know, on those email blasts also.
So, so mostly the advertising through different media.
Yeah, and, and putting anything on the, in the Maple Leaf, uh, uh, which is hard to do since it's, you know, usually not in a timely fashion. It has to be put together well in advance of the, uh, you know, but general information about boards and informations can be put in, in the, in the Maple Leaf and, and how you would apply for a position, uh, on those boards or commissions.
And, and I think Laura addressed that in her work session, that that is what she's doing already. Planning to continue as well as post like she did for the one opening. On the, all the various social media sites that she manages. So I think it seems like she's got social media covered. Unless there's some new one that I'm too old to know about. Can you TikTok it?
City of Maplewood is not going to have TikTok. Instagram would be fine by me, but not TikTok.
I know. I, I hope it gets banned.
We do.
Councilmember Schmidt, I still have a My, I still have a MySpace account that I use.
It's awful.
Do they activate it from your Hotmail account?
Is if members of the, uh, of the public listening to this have any ideas, please submit those to, uh, and, you know, hopefully you know how to submit comments to, uh, mayor and council and staff through the website. Uh, if not, uh, we can lead you through that process also. Uh, the, the final item, uh,
We kind of skipped website though, I think. Was that what you?
Go ahead.
Eleanor?
Oh, no, I was actually gonna try to add another number, but a short one.
What's that?
Okay.
So, go ahead, Jenny.
But just to reiterate, for information on website, I think we did talk about that earlier also, right? That the product would be outlined on the website, one place, yeah, everyone could go to.
Since we have a larger audience right now, I just wonder, we, you know, we state that.
Yeah.
Uh, Eleanor?
So I was wondering, one thing that I think, uh, might be useful is if we could find some sort of, um, is to have, you know, I think we, we have a lot of more interest now in people joining boards and commissions. And there's, there's going to be adding some, um, new voices. And it might be useful to have an entry level sunshine training or webinar that is available to people on like a regular basis rather than a pop-up basis or something we can go to, to, for any member because all of boarding mission processes follow open records law in, in the state of Missouri. And so we, you know, I, I think it would be a good idea if we could offer some basic training in the open records law and, um, for our members.
I think one way to manage that would be to have the, uh, the board and commission chairs in attendance on the seminar as opposed to requiring everyone to do that. They're already making a commitment. Uh, Jenny?
Yeah, I, I'll disagree in just the fact that, you know, that's like a game of telephone. So, I mean, what, one person interprets something and then shares it. And I just know, like, for instance, to coach soccer for emergency sports, you know, I had to watch training about safety and and I just did it on my own time. That was something I did as part of.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? Like an hour, two hours isn't a huge.
Yeah, by the time it happens, you know, the, you know, we can still do it via Zoom, but even if, uh,
I mean, we can, we can do it with a pre-recorded webinar.
Yeah.
Provided by some sort of Missouri.
That's fine.
A vendor or some, I mean, I, I would have benefited from that. My, I operated for, um, two and a half years on sustainability commission. I didn't learn that boards and commissions were subject to open records law until I went to new elected official training.
Okay, uh, no, that, uh, I have no problem. Uh, I think everyone is in agreement that it would be helpful to have some type of, uh, seminar available to everyone. And, and, you know, I have no problem requiring them to, to watch it as part of their, their involvement in the board or commission. The last item is that I have on my list. I'm not sure that we're going to get too far into this one because it's coordination of efforts with the Equity Advisory Group. The, the Equity Advisory Group is something that on August 22nd, for the general public, the entire city council is attending a full day workshop on, I think Eleanor has the.
I'm holding it up there.
That's Sean. I couldn't see behind the, thank you Sean. And so this, this seminar that we're attending is also being attended by staff. And this is in preparation for establishing yet another, we don't know what we're going to call it yet, whether it's a, a board commission advisory group. But the idea is that this advisory group would hit, would interact with all the boards and commissions. They would interact with mayor and council. They would interact with staff. And so we have yet to determine exactly what their, what their responsibilities are going to be, what the, and even what their goals are going to be, except for promoting a more equitable and just community. And so we're taking, you know, proactive steps in that regard. And if anyone else. Yes.
Sorry, we, so just want to clarify. We're going to the training this Saturday on August 15th.
15th, sorry.
It's okay, right? Currently in this, in this round, all seven council members are going to attend. And staff will be working on creating a plan. We'll be working with, with Anthony to create a plan for staff to attend future trainings. And there's some high level commitment there, which is great. And I just want to, when we last had our racial equity discussion in July, I, I think it's still, that we're still at the place where we, it is a little bit jumping the gun to figure out whether or not we will establish a kind of council. And that, that we need to do some more learning. We also have decided that our, our next work session, which is before the next meeting on the 25th is devoted to talking about racial equity work. And we agreed, we, we decided to have it at the second August meeting instead of the first so that we could go through the training first and then we could revisit, revisit like our holistic discussion then. And I, you know, want to reiterate that I have some personal caution about establishing a board too quickly because often boards are places where you can say that work is done by those people over there rather than saying this work is owned by all of us. And that any kind of work that happens has to be tied to policymaking and to budgeting decisions. And in a real ownership kind of way. So I hope that we can, we can still have like a high level discussion about strategy and use a lot from what we learned in, in the very beginning of our journey of, of training, well, of work together at this coming weekend.
I, I think too, in the meantime, you know, while we're still deciding those things, we can still, you know, utilize things that are beneficial from that type of structure by making sure we are looking at things through an equity lens, making sure, giving opportunity for all, everyone to participate and share opinion. And so I think until we make that decision, we can still do things that move us forward in terms of.
Okay. Is there any other council communication before we move on to the mayor's report? Okay, mayor's report is, is just, is pretty brief. You know, everyone that's been listening tonight understands that there's a lot of compassion and a lot of concern for what's going on in our community, in the region, in the state, in the world. And, you know, I would just, you know, as, as was pointed out, we're trying to solve, help solve these problems. We're not going to be able to solve all these problems, but we're working on, together with the community on solutions. And, you know, this, this workshop coming up this weekend will allow us to do a better job of listening and taking action to make our community a better place to live. So is there a city attorney's report?
Attorney report.
City manager's report?
Just a quick update. I spoke with Bob Slaven, who's doing the search for the city manager. At 35 applicants, they whittled that down to 12 about a week ago. They're down to about eight. Mr. Slaven anticipates sending five or six applicants in a packet with all the information to the, each individual member of the city council within the next two weeks. When that's on its way, I'll make sure to let everyone know. So we should have five or six applicants within two weeks. Had a lot of storm damage. Everyone that drove through town saw that. We do have citywide storm damage. The event was severe enough that we're doing it citywide through next Wednesday, August 19th. And if you see anyone with an entire tree outside, please let them know we do not take entire trees. We seem to have that happen quite a bit. It's just essentially large limbs and, and debris. But we did that, that'll be going on through next Wednesday. City Attorney Hessel had sent an email, and I believe I forwarded it. If not, it's on the Sunshine Law Seminar that we talked about, that he was going to put on for members of the council. And his dates, he was thinking 7:00 PM. He sent several dates. Some, the dates are August 26th, September 10th, 15th, 23rd, 24th, or 29th. I don't know if anyone's had a chance because I just recently sent that. But does, do you want to talk about that now or do you want to just send emails and figure out a date?
I have to rescind the 26th offer, sorry. Something came up today that I now need to attend on the evening of the 26th, so.
So we've got dates, those dates in September, the 10th, 15th, 23rd, 24th, or 29th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, I think everyone needs to check their schedules and, and hopefully we can come up with a common date that's good for all of us.
Can we please reply to, reply to all and then I'll, I'll get that scheduled as soon as possible?
Okay.
Let me know and we can try and adjust the time. Be for the majority.
And then while I have City Attorney Hessel's attention, is it, boards and commissions they were talking about when they're reviewing the applications? Can they review those applications in closed sessions? Do you have any concerns with that? They're reviewing multiple applications for a board and commission. They're going to be talking about those individuals, whether they'd be good for the board or bad for the board?
Unfortunately, that's not a personnel matter. It is not a matter that is ripe for a closed matter. Now, to the extent that you're dealing with background and history of things, and things of that nature, that information should be kept confidential. Because everyone has a right of privacy, even though the sunshine law doesn't specifically address that issue. There are certain things that people might be identifying that really should not be discussed publicly.
We got a preview of our, our sunshine law seminar right there.
Yeah, yeah, and we, we can further discuss that at the, you know, during the seminar.
Then the last thing. Laura Miller is going to be on 550 AM KTRAS, August 18th at 1:35 PM to promote Wandering Wednesdays and Taste of Maplewood. If anyone wants to turn the radio on, you can hear Laura speak. She always does a fantastic job representing the city. And that's all I have.
What was that date again? I didn't get that.
August, August 18th at 1:35 PM.
Yeah, it's like the Carney Show or something.
Oh, okay.
She really does do a good job. If you haven't heard her speak, she's of the, of the city. And that's all I have.
Okay.
So could I ask one question real quick? In preparation for the heart, I would, I would be interested if, to, to hear from, to have Mr. Hessel review our parks ordinance as like one piece? Would it be possible for, to get?
Are we talking about for the mini food pantries?
No, just for when we have the discussion about the.
Commercial use of the parks.
Yeah.
I'll be honest, it sounds like we need to review that for the mini pantries.
Yeah.
The memo, Councilmember Schmidt sent. Seems like that's obviously, it's got enough to at least get those reviews in as far as support from the council. So we can review that. I know we need to review the ordinance for that as well.
Okay, it is, I mean, it's all one.
We'll do a review for both of those issues at, at the same time.
And perhaps any other inconsistencies you might find.
Yeah, if you, if there's things that are glaring in that ordinance, you know, we, we should.
So you want, you did, you want us to remove the language it talks about when it references beaches and digging?
Yeah.
We'll go through that entire section and. If you turn your thoughts on myself, we'll get something for you guys.
Quickly, and the, the current legislation that we have dealing with parks and recreation, I have reviewed over the last 40 years, a lot of ordinances dealing with parks. And I would respectfully suggest that ours is woefully inadequate. We need, I applaud the mayor and council for referring this matter to the park board. If you look at duties and responsibilities, this is right up their alley. And as a city attorney, my suggestion is that you have these boards and commissions for a reason. And this is a classic example of how you can utilize those members of the community who are volunteering their time, who are going to give their thoughts and, and suggestions and things of that nature. Absolutely. And I'd be happy to work with Anthony to work with the park board in trying to identify not only the issues that you're raising now, but on a broader issue. For better or worse, I've been involved in litigation for communities where the regulations were the subject of challenges under the First Amendment challenges as to whether or not the parks were being used appropriately and not in a discriminatory manner. So those are all good topics for discussion.
Thank you.
It'll take a little bit of time, I will tell you. I think our ordinances of dealing with the parks need more than a little bit of work.
Let's do it. Let's get it done.
Okay. Item number 17 is the second public forum. Looking at the attendee list, I don't see anyone with their.
So if you would like to speak, please do the raise your hand thing in the Zoom interface.
So we'll give people a few seconds here to, to raise their hand. And.
We've got no one yet.
There's a note in the chat that says the Mid County Chamber of Commerce Summer Concert Series scheduled for Wednesday, August 26th is canceled in compliance with St. Louis guidelines of 50 people or less. Hoping to reschedule for October if the guidelines are loosened.
Thanks for.
The next two?
Yeah.
All right, we have a person. Anthony?
Amber Withacum, please. Amber? Can you hear us now?
Yes, I can. Thank you. This is Amber Withacum at 3339 Cambridge Avenue. I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's done tonight on the council with reference to the topic of the food pantries, as well as all of the amazing comments that we received from our neighbors. I just want to mention one item that kind of seemed to get lost in this conversation, which is that Maplewood put together a community letter that was signed by over 300 people in support of the mini pantries. I just want to make sure that that's included in our discussion tonight and goes into the recording. Just to recognize the, again, as I think I referenced in my comments at the last city council meeting, the overwhelming number of people who are active in this organization and, and supportive of these efforts and who are willing to work with the city to find solutions to how to make these sustainable opportunities for people to resolve their issues with food insecurity. So I just wanted to make sure that that was noted.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other hands raised? In the, in, is there a necessity to have a closed session?
No, sir.
I'll entertain a motion for adjournment then.
Don't move.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is now adjourned. Thanks for everyone for participating and observing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Be safe.
Thank you.